Okay. In that case, why don't we go ahead and get started? So, thank you, everybody, for attending virtually and watching. So, we are going to start out this evening with approving the board minutes. So, we have two different sessions or two different minutes that we need to approve. The first will be the board meeting minutes from December.
I motion to approve the board meeting minutes from December. Zaimi?
This is Jenna, seconded.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
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 All those opposed? Okay. So, next up, we will approve the board minutes from the closed session in October.
This is Leslie, I move to approve the closed session minutes from October.
This is Rich Lee, all second.
All right, a little bit of a tie there between Rich Lee and Greg. I'll let you guys battle it out. Any further discussion?
You're such a gentleman, thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, all those opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, so next up on the agenda, we have a couple of public speakers. So, give me just one second here. All right, so first of all, thank you both to Mr. Augusto as well as Mr. Edens for coming forward with some public comments tonight. So, prior to any public speaker, we like to remind everyone of what our protocols are and how we handle public comments. So, first of all, each of you will receive three minutes to provide your feedback. I will keep track of the time and you may hear a little buzzer in the background. That would just be my phone telling you when time has expired. So, we're confident, as with the vast majority of our public speakers, that you will share your feedback in a respectful and positive manner. If by chance that is not occurring, then I will step in and I will stop the public comments and we'll move on to the next item in the agenda. As a board, our intent is to listen to your feedback and we will take it under advisement. We will not be responding to your public comments this evening at the conclusion of your public comments. We will take it under advisement and determine how best to disposition them as part of the broader board function. So, with that, I would like to call on Mr. Augusto and go ahead and get you set up and started. Mrs. Stein, I believe he has the ability to go ahead and speak, is that correct?
Yep, it looks like Lou's ready to go.
Okay, thank you, Rick, thank you, Shannon. Again, my name's Lou Augusto and my son is Eli Augusto. He is a senior on the swim team. I am here on behalf of the swim team's parents and Coach Stuart Isaacs. And with their overwhelming support, I'm asking you to allow us to finish their season. I know you have a difficult decision to make. And it would be easy to just say, let's pause the sports seasons for three weeks. That avoids any second guessing. But we only have two meets left. And then we have regionals on February 5th and state championships on February 12th. And the decision to pause sports for three weeks has significant consequences. It is important for the board to know that its decision can make a negative, can have a negative impact on once in a lifetime experiences for our student athletes. And I want to make sure that you properly weigh the cost to our students. It would effectively jeopardize their season. First of all, a pause would lose the opportunity for the next two meets to qualify for regionals. You don't automatically make regionals, you have to make times. And those last two meets are especially important for several of our swimmers. Even if you lift the pause before regionals, they will have lost the opportunity to practice for the next three weeks and we know what impact that would have on their times. And if the rest of the season is canceled, you would eliminate once in a lifetime opportunities. Senior Harrison Poe is the defending state champion in 200 free. He currently has the fastest time in the 100 breaststroke in the state. He has a legitimate chance to be a two-time state champion. Likewise, my son is on a relay team that missed the podium last year by only seven hundredths of a second. And that has burned him in his desire to get one last chance to make that podium. And currently, two of their relays have the second fastest time in the state. So, it's a legitimate opportunity for them to do well as well. So, please don't understand the cost of pausing the season. Now, Coach Isaac follows USA Swimming and state guidelines for COVID protocols. And Coach Isaacs wanted me to let you know that he is willing to alter practices in any way necessary to make them safer. And he just asked for the opportunity to adapt them as needed. And I should note that the coronavirus cannot be transmitted by the chlorinated water and swimming pools. And this is backed by studies by both the World Health Organization and CDC. Coach Isaacs observed to me that while most often the physical dangers of COVID-19 are cited for decisions, the negative emotional impact of these limitations is often ignored or underestimated. According to the CDC, last year, there were 34,000 deaths in the age group 15 to 24. 510 were COVID-related. About 1% out of a total population for that age group of 41 million. CDC also has leading causes of death for teenagers. They list accidents with 48% first. Homicides comes in second at 13%. And then third at 11% is suicides. Sports provides an important emotional and social outlet for the kids. Don't underestimate the importance of sports in the lives of our students. One parent told me swim has been the closest.
Mr. Augusto, I apologize, your three minutes is up. I do need to stick to the board rules.
Okay, so, well, on behalf of the swim team and especially on behalf of the nine seniors, I respectfully request that you allow them to complete their season. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, we have Mr. Edens.
Thank you very much.
Same thing, Mr. Edens.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, just same thing.
Okay. Thank you very much, board, for letting me speak this evening. I first want to know, I want you to know that we are humbled and fortunate to be part of this great school. We all understand that education comes first. And that is why we have our kids at Lake Norman Charter. With this being said, I'm here tonight to speak about athletics, in particular basketball. We are requesting that sports continue as scheduled. I want to take a moment to let you know, this is not for us as parents. It is for our student athletes that have done everything that has been asked of them. Lake Norman Charter has taught them to learn, lead, and serve. And through all this, our kids have exceeded expectations. They have wore their masks, they have stayed six feet apart. They've respected their community by ensuring that they follow these protocols. They have also given up time with their family and friends and sacrificed so much for the chance of having some sort of normalcy through sports. It is our turn to show them that their perseverance has paid off. Give them the light at the end of the tunnel and show them that it has been worth it. I know that we have shown that we can make this work. You have put into place great leadership with our superintendent, principal, athletic director, and coaches. Have confidence in them that they will and have done everything possible to protect our student athletes. We have two examples already. The volleyball team went through a season with bumps, but they were able to overcome it. We also, in the basketball program, were in quarantine for two weeks. We have come back stronger because of the policies and procedures that were put in place. We would also like for you to consider that this, that we play in a conference that will not pause and will continue to play. Due to this, we will not have an opportunity to start the season back. The North Carolina High School Association has dates that they have set out for each sport and they are not willing to change these dates. And please also consider the fact that grandparents can watch your grandkids on live stream. This is done in the safety of their home and maybe some of the few moments they get close to their family. I am in home health and it is my job to protect the elderly. My wife has cancer and my son has severe asthma. But we continue to play sports. We continue to protect ourselves. And I know all of our families and you and the board members have sacrificed so much for our community and families. So, let's continue to march along to the new norm. Lake Norman Charter Board, let's be leaders and show that we can make a difference and give our student athletes a chance to do what they love.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Edens.
Mr. Augusto and Mr. Edens, I just wanted to remind you that at the end of this, it's time to switch over to an attendee. And if you need that link, you just let me know and I can resend that for you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next order of business, which is the PTO update.
Wonderful, good evening, everyone. I am happy to join you guys this evening and happy to have some information to finally share as we start 2021. For old business, I initially want to let everyone know, we had our second virtual PTO meeting that occurred on Monday, January the 11th. It was a well-attended meeting by PTO and LNC families. And we are finding a silver lining in all of this, that the virtual environment has actually given us an increased number in attendance. So, this may be something that we continue as we exit our pandemic. The next thing that I have on our topics for this evening is the remaining PTO meetings. The dates that we have will be February the 1st, March 1st, and April 19th. All of these meetings will start at 6:30 PM and will continue to be in a virtual environment through the end of the year. We are also happy to inform the board that we had an awesome staff gifting program this year in the midst of COVID-19. The PTO provided Target gift cards to all of our LNC faculty and staff at the amount of $104. We are so thankful for our LNC families and their generosity. As we entered the holiday season, we were able to show our appreciation to our staff here at LNC. So, we were really proud. That's probably one of our first events for the year. So, we were happy to kind of get that under our belt. Regarding PTO staff funding requests for 2021, we, as a PTO, supported enhancements in our virtual environment and hoping in 2021, 2022, that we will be addressing and accommodating our in-classroom needs for our staff. So, we are aware that this year, the focus was not there. But as we continue to progress through this year, we will try to address those needs as well. As far as the new business that we have for the PTO, we are so happy to announce that we will have our first staff appreciation luncheon for this year on February the 12th, which is Friday. Our hospitality committee across all three campuses are currently working on pricing for boxed lunches to be distributed by our LNC PTO and select parent volunteers in an outdoor space at each campus. We will definitely have more specifics, more details, and more to come regarding our first staff appreciation luncheon. We want to make sure that safety is our priority there. But we do want to let our staff members know that we are still here and support them. Regarding yearbooks, and this is for elementary school only, the yearbook committee is finalizing student pictures and selections, layouts, and backgrounds. They're sorting through photos for our littlest nights. The current price for those yearbooks are $30 and they will be $30 until January the 29th. After the 29th, that price will go up to $35. For the middle school and the high school, I don't have that information, but that will also be provided for everyone via Schoology. Our lunch program is another thing campus-wide that we want to really take our hats off to those committee members. They actually resume next Thursday. And we are wanting to let everyone know that we are at 50% as far as participation goes with our families within the program. Our current revenue for November and December was about $11,500. In a normal environment, this would be around $30,000. So, this definitely supports that we're at a 50% basically capacity rate. And it all has to do with our hybrid learning, you know, as switching from the hybrid to a remote environment these last couple of weeks. So, we are just happy at this point to be at 50%. And we know that once we get back to whatever our new normal will be, that those numbers will also rebound. In their report, also, they wanted to let the board know that our top vendors at the elementary school, middle school, and high school has kind of changed up a little bit. North State Barbecue is the number one vendor on those campuses. And then Mama's follows in a close second. So, North State was one of the new vendors for the middle school and high school. So, they have really made an impact on our students there. I'm also going to be soliciting to let everyone know that we still need lunch volunteers. And please, you know, make sure that all those people sign up via Sign Up Genius on the website. The last thing that I have on my calendar is spirit wear. And this is more of an FYI that the spirit wear is not ordering any new apparel because of the environment that we're in currently. They are going to be regrouping, though, in the summer. And if, in fact, we resume somewhat of a normal schedule in the fourth quarter, they are going to be entertaining an outdoor clearance sale for our families. So, I will keep you guys updated on that as we monitor school activities. And that is all I have for the PTO this evening.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Burden. Appreciate the update.
No problem.
I'd just like to give a shout out on behalf of all of the staff, first of all, for the PTO's coordination of the holiday gift drive. That always means a ton. And a shout out to all the families that are listening and participated because we know it's an unusual year and families are stretched in a lot of different ways. And yet, they really got behind and showed the love for the staff. So, we really appreciate that. And a real call out to the PTO leadership and the lunch program because they have been very creative in their support of the lunch program and abiding by safety. It's been a wonderful, it's always been a wonderful partnership. But in a time like this, they've been exceptional partners. So, appreciate that, Nicole, if you could share that with.
Sure, well, thank you so much.
All right, thanks. So, next up on the agenda, we have the school and state update, Mrs. Stein.
Yeah, so, just a few things. First of all, I just want to let the folks know that we are starting our school rapid antigen testing pilot. You know, we obviously have been in full remote once we came back, but there have been a couple of opportunities to utilize that testing. And once we get back into a full hybrid situation, that's going to be a nice tool for us to help families to maybe know a little bit sooner if their exposure could have resulted in an actual case of COVID. And we're also helping the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services with their tracking. Ms. Shipman has done an exceptional job of putting in all of the different procedures that we needed to be successful with that. So, just want to give her a shout out for continued work in assisting us and our families. In these crazy times, our staff continues to go above and beyond to do creative things to help make a little bit of sense of normalcy. And I shared some of that in the board packet for the board members to look at, which I know several of you have because you made comments. Ms. Bervine has been putting an art show together where students have been submitting art pieces virtually. And she's still been running Art Club virtually. And so, that's allowing our students with that creative outlet, who are abundantly talented, to still have that inspiration and collaboration and get to show their art. And so, there, you know, she's using these pieces now to put together in a larger show moving forward. And that's just one example of many things that I could call out for teachers. But kudos to her and to all our staff who continue to think about, how can we do things outside the box when, you know, COVID may be restricting? And I just really commend them for really trying to think about what that would look like and what that means to our students and families. We had our LNC alumni panels, which were held virtually this year. And it was kind of cool. Ms. Williams is our alumni coordinator, Ms. Leanne Williams at the high school. She's developed our social media platforms with our alumni. And she called on certain people to try to help our students who are getting ready to graduate to be able to have a forum to hear about what it is like at college, ask questions. And then she took it further and had another session where it talked about grad school and workforce and success beyond. So, it was really a well-received opportunity for our seniors. And we had some alumni, some dating way back to our inaugural class, who came back to share their experiences. So, that was really cool and it was nice to see our alumni feeding back in and kind of remembering the heart of service back to the school and inspiring their teachers. And lastly, Mr. Smith and I have been asked to speak to a college class at Elon University. There is a class on book censorship and they have been following closely the poet X and the court case that is still moving forward. And just wanting to learn from that and have asked us to participate. So, we will be doing that next week. So, that is all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Stein. So, next up on the agenda is a finance update. So, Mr. Tilly and Mrs. Wilson?
Yeah, thank you. Shannon, you plan on?
Yep, yep, I can share the screen. Just give me one second and let me get it up, Jared. I just got a, can you see it there?
Yes.
Okay, I'll hit present and you just let me know when to move forward.
All right, great. Yeah, so, this is an update from the finance committee, which is made up of myself, Mrs. Stein, obviously Haley Wilson, who's our business services director, and then Leslie Fogarty, who's our vice chair, is also on that committee. So, want to provide a couple of updates. One on the project Elevate budget, some of the things that are going on there financially. And then also, we'll kind of touch on some things progressed in terms of the investment strategy and our evaluation on that front. So, Shannon, if you will, just move to the next page. And, you know, Haley, rest of the team, welcome you jumping in at any point as we go through this. So, the Elevate campaign budget, if you'll remember, in October, we had some cost overruns related to the turf field and track. We got approval at the board level to increase the overall budget by about, I think it was up to $150,000. We think $130,000 is going to cover it. But we did increase the budget for the overall project. And these are kind of the numbers as they stand as of early January. The amended budget or adjusted budget is about 2.44 million. Thus far, we spent about 2.1 million of that. And we've got a remaining balance there of just shy of $400,000. What I'll say is phases A through B are complete. There's some final payment arrangements being made there. So, there's not really an upside in that category. Just want to point that out, but that ultimately will be used as we pay different vendors. The press box, which is that phase C1 that you see on the second to the last row at the bottom, that is all underway. I talked to Scott and I don't want to steal their thunder in case they have an update, but my understanding is the roof is complete. They've done some enhanced security. And there's interior work that's either starting or already in progress. So, lots of progress there. And then, just kind of the last point I'll make is that based on what we know today, we don't expect any risks. So, we're still projecting that with the additional increase in the budget, we can complete phases A through C1 on budget. Haley, anything I missed that we want to, you know, add for the board and the group on the call?
No, Jared, I think you covered it all.
All right, and we'll try to give another update, maybe not every month, but every other month as the project continues. And certainly, a final one after all the projects are completely closed out. All right, so, moving on to the investment strategy update. Shannon, if you want to move to the next slide. So, in our November board meeting, we updated you on some of the progress we're making in terms of developing an investment strategy, some of the potential investment management firms that we had reached out to and engaged to discuss, you know, how they might be able to help us, what that fit would look like. And if you remember, there were two firms spoken to. One was Foundation for the Carolinas, the other one was PNC. At that time, we felt like PNC was a little better fit for us. It was kind of the preferred option. Foundation for the Carolinas is really more, I guess, they're geared more towards endowment and philanthropic organizations. So, we definitely had some good dialogue with PNC. And then there were some follow-up questions asked from the board that we wanted to go back to PNC with and, you know, just get a little bit more detail from them and start to be able to answer some of the questions that you all had. So, in terms of our discussions with PNC, we talked quite a bit about, you know, our risk tolerance. You know, we also talked about appropriate ranges of returns and target returns and kind of what that looked like and how we might allocate, you know, an investment or investment allocation, what might be a good fit for us. And we also wanted to get some additional information around our peers. You know, if PNC does a lot of investment management for other educational clients, including charter schools, so we asked them to share some information around how, you know, how those clients invest their funds, where they invest those funds, and just to do some peer benchmarking. So, I've got a little bit of information further in the deck that I can share with you that kind of shows how those clients are investing their additional funds and where we might sit across that continuum. We also wanted to dig a little deeper on the costs and the fee structure, which we have done and got a pretty clear sense of what that looks like because we certainly want to, you know, weigh that as we look at our different options. And then finally, you know, just in terms of, you know, making this easy for the school, making this easy for Haley to work with an investment management firm in terms of getting access to the account. You know, what do those cadences look like from a periodic review of performance? You know, some of the oversight and the governance that goes with that. So, we got some, got into some good dialogue there with PNC and feel like we've made good progress. During that time, we also felt the need to engage with a third potential investment management firm. We had some contacts with Raymond James. So, we reached out to them, did the same thing we did with, as we did with PNC in terms of discussing our investment approach and what our needs were and what our investment objectives would be. We also reviewed some, you know, their investment proposal, similar to PNC. They came back to us with a simulation in terms of what that might look like so we could sort of kind of put things in real terms. And then we also had some discussion just recently around the costs and the fees and got some additional information there. I know that was a lot to unpack, but certainly Haley, if you've got anything to add or if there's questions before we kind of move through this, certainly open to taking some. All right, Shannon, next slide. So, as I mentioned, we engaged with a third investment firm, that was Raymond James. I would say, based on our conversations, I felt like Raymond James provides very similar services to PNC. Both check off some of the boxes that we want in terms of the portfolio management, the allocation, asset allocation. And they also do have, you know, they provide investment services to these nonprofits as well as charities. as well as charter schools, which I think is, is helpful. And then they both provide that investment policy consultation. They'll help us go through that, develop that as a guideline for the school in terms of what we do from an investment strategy standpoint. So really this page here is just to say, hey, in terms of kind of sizing up Raymond James and PNC, they were very similar in terms of their offering. I felt like both of those could be a fit. What I will say is, is that initially it sounds like their fee structure and the costs are, are a little bit different. So we, that's something we need to consider and think about as we move forward. Haley, anything else here? Okay, all right, Shannon. So in terms of the peer benchmarking, this is some additional information we wanted to gather just to kind of see, based on where we were thinking, you know, we might go in terms of our investment policy and how we would invest those funds. We want to see how we, you know, sized up versus some of the peers and the kind of the edu- educational client, you know, yeah, group. So Shannon, you can go on to the next one. And this is going to be a little bit of an eye chart, but PNC provided some benchmarking. So what you'll see here, just so I can orient you to the page is on the, on the left-hand side is a, is a bar chart. And each of those bars represents how clients in the educational grouping in that educational peer group invest their funds and kind of where they fall in terms of the percentile. So each of those bar charts also represents a, a different asset type or a different asset class. So if you look at the very bottom, you'll see that the number of peers that were included in that benchmarking for that specific asset class, they're a little bit different, you know, because not every one in this benchmarking invests in all those different asset classes. So that's why you see a little bit of different result here. But the way that this works is if you see the, the green shaded line at the bottom, that is the median average. And so what this says is, is that in the educational client group that are being benchmarked here, 59, 59% are investing in equities or 59% of their portfolio is invested in equities. And currently, as we're kind of going through this, we're looking to be a little less aggressive. And so we're looking to be more around a 30% equity allocation. So if that was the case and we went that direction, you can see we'd find, we'd fall into this 95th percentile, which is the bottom fifth, which would be a highly conservative approach in terms of what we're doing. And I think that's consistent with what we're looking to do. So it kind of confirms that. Conversely, on the fixed income side, kind of the middle of the chart going down, you see if we, if we allocate 70% to fixed income, we would be in the top 5%. Because you know, here, the top 5% of that are really only investing or allocating the portfolio to about 55% in fixed income. So again, it just kind of reinforces the fact that a 70 or a 70, 30 fixed income to equity allocation would be very conservative relative to our peers in this benchmark.
This is Jared, for educational clients, I mean, do you know how many of those are charter schools? Does that also include like privates? Does it include higher education?
Could be, yeah, so this is not necessarily higher education in terms of colleges and universities, those types of institutions. These are more educational, private schools, charter schools, things like that. So we're in the same group, but we don't know how many are, you know, charter schools versus private schools versus other. But what it does tell us is that if we take the approach in terms of some of the simulations that we've gone through with both PNC and with Raymond James, a 30, 70 equity fixed income split or allocation would be very conservative to the peers. Any other questions?
This is Rick. Before we leave this slide, was there any consideration given? Well, actually, let me ask, the alternatives that are listed here? Is that kind of a, a cash equivalent type of alternative? Or is that, or is that something different?
It's a, it's a good question, a little different, something we asked as well. So just kind of to touch on the cash, both always suggest to keep a little bit of cash in your portfolio, even if it's a, you know, 2%. To give you some wiggle room, some opportunity, do some opportunity buying and see it selling and things like that. We asked about the alternatives. I, I had the, had a, a sense that that was more around private equity, hedge funds, things like that. And that's, that's the case. And what they said was you diversify, you know, continue to diversify beyond fixed income and beyond equity. But typically you're not going to really get the bang for your buck unless you've got, you know, $10 million to invest. And so those, that's, those are really opportunity buys according to them. And so we probably wouldn't be a good match for expanding our portfolio into those alternative investments.
Okay, got it, thank you.
All right, I think we can move to the last slide, just next steps, right? So I, I think Haley, Haley and I in the, the finance committee need to do some further analysis on, you know, the cost structure of the two investment firms. We really wanted kind of come up with this optimal balance between, you know, the cost and then what type of portfolio management are we getting? So typically the more passive, the investment management, the lower the cost, right? Is that the right fit for us? So we need to do a little bit more digging in terms of what we're getting for the dollars that we'd be paying. Cause we're not going to go, you know, high risk, high reward. Need to be able to cover inflation and those types of things. So we just need to take the, all those things into consideration. But now we have, have, have had these conversations and this dialogue with these two firms. I think we're ready to start doing that. Coming out of that analysis, I think we're going to be ready to prepare a recommendation to the board for investment firm decisioning. So to move, to pick an investment firm to, to work with and partner with to move forward. And then we'd want to work with them to develop that investment policy statement. We've got one in place, it's not being used, it's, it's pretty old, I guess you could say it's aged. And so we need to revise that and we would, you know, leverage their expertise to help us develop that investment policy statement, which would really be our strategy in terms of how, the guidelines of how we would, you know, invest going forward. And then from there, we would need, you know, board approval on the investment policy statement. Assuming we got board approval, we would move forward with the funding and investment account. And we're really like very thoughtfully, very methodically. We don't want to rush into this and trying to gather as much information as we can and share along the way so that the board's comfortable as we're, you know, moving forward, making progress and making decisions. So Haley, anything else you want to add that I've, I've missed? But I think this kind of wraps up the update relative to the investment strategy progress.
I have flawless job, Jared, thank you.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Jared.
Any?
This is Greg.
Hey, hey Greg.
This is Greg. Hey, sorry to go back one slide, but when you're looking at the equities analysis, is it, are we talking about broadly held indices? Are we talking about individual equities? Kind of what, what value is each, it's PNC versus Raymond James presenting? Is it kind of what, what they hold? Do you have a sense of how they, they pick those equity?
Yeah, yeah, a good question. So certainly PNC and Raymond James have their own sort of approach. They have their own, you know, particular funds that they prefer. And again, based on your target rate of return, they'll come to, they came to us with a proposal. I can share more information. But what I'll say is, for example, for Raymond James, they have recommended that we move towards a, a very robust ETF model, where there's a lot of different indices based on ETFs. So for example, in equities, you might have some emerging markets, non-domestic or non-US, but also have some US ETFs. And to continue to drive that, you know, diversification across different funds. I, I think the, the PNC was, I have to go back and look, but I think PNC had a combination of both mutual fund as well as ETF. But that kind of changed, right? The, 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 the mutual fund is a little bit more active, what I'd call actively managed. I'm not an investment professional, but, but yet the, and then the ETFs are a little more passively managed. So that's where I was saying, we kind of need to line this up with the cost to make sure it makes sense. So we're doing, you know, optimizing the, the dollars we're spending and maximizing the returns that we can get. Does that, does that help? Hopefully I answered that enough to, to suffice.
Yeah, that's great, thank you. Hey Jared, one more question. Have you guys evaluated, you know, what I call sort of true cash equivalents to help manage the situation that we have with our covenants? So whether that's some portion of the portfolio and, you know, money markets, overnight investing, things of that nature, that from a balance sheet perspective, it's still regarded as cash and therefore we don't get dinged on our covenants?
Yeah, we, well, we, what we haven't, here's what we have though. We have looked at the option of opening up or pushing more of those dollars into a cash money market, cash equivalents investment. What we don't know, I think, you know, Haley and I need to do a little due diligence on this is would that, is that the equivalent of, of having that cash sitting in a, in a, you know, a checking account at Wells Fargo? For example, if, 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 if we can earn, you know, the T bill rate on the cash equivalents, is that worth holding that cash in an account like this as opposed to a checking account? That, that, that's something that we still need to look at and, and I kind of have on a list of things that we need to address.
Okay, and that really just kind of fits with the, you know, the overall cash balance, how we allocate it between, you know, true cash versus investments and things of that nature. So I'm assuming that will also be part of the recommendation that you'll come back with.
Yes, and it will also give you a full view of the, the costs and the fees, just so you can see that. So we just, we, we weren't quite ready to share all of that information because we want to come to you with a recommendation. But we'll share that information as well as give you a flavor for, you know, the types of funds that we would be investing in, both on the equity and the fixed income side.
Okay, good, exciting stuff. Thank you for the update.
Yep.
Any other questions for Jared or Haley?
So I need to get the board's action on an item really quick, Rick, before you move forward. Um, so if you look at the slides right now, Shannon, if you want to go to the next slide. So back in April of last year, Congress enacted the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. And part of that act, it created two forms of leave that covered, that covered employers had to offer its employees in regards to COVID-19. So one of them was the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act and the other was the Emergency Family and Medical Leave Expansion Act. So pretty much these two provisions provided employees with paid job protected leave but qualifying COVID-19 related reasons. When the act was enacted, it had a December 31st sunset provision. So when Congress passed the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2021, it did allow the extension of these two forms of leave through March 31st, 2021. And it also allowed us as an employer to continue taking the tax credits for doing so. But in order to extend this, we do need to have board approval. So I wanted to bring this to you guys tonight to see if you would be willing to approve the extension of these two acts under the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2021.
So Haley, just to, to make sure that I'm clear on this, this is really an update to the handbook? Is that correct?
So we will make an update to the handbook to change pretty much the date from December 31st, 2020 to March 31st, 2021. Just one other thing to note, so if some employees have tapped into this leave already, they're not getting a brand new bank. It's just allowing the use of the 80 hours to extend until March 31st of 2021. But again, it will be at no cost to the school because we are eligible to receive the tax credits.
But, but Haley, just for clarification, before we were automatically participating and when the Consolidated Appropriations Act came out, it then became optional. And I, I'm not sure why we would not do this. It is a benefit to our, our staff who may be affected by COVID and we can, and receive the tax credit. But it is required that we get board approval for, to actually participate. And then we'll make the, the change to the date in the handbook and that information.
Got it, thank you.
So do you?
Is there a motion out there?
Motion to?
Go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, I was gonna say, a motion to approve the extension of the FFC RA. I got that right?
This is Jen, I'll second it.
All right, any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Hi. Thank you.
All those opposed? Haley's just running, she's not even waiting for anybody, yeah? All right.
And on behalf of our staff, thank you. That will be, it'll be good to participate again.
All right, so next up on the agenda, we have committee updates. So we'll start off with the campus planning and Elevate Committee. Not sure, Mr. Abel, Mr. Schlegel? Which one of you guys is taking that away?
Jared, I'll take it. So we, we are working through trying to close out the, the contract of Sprint Turf, working on a couple of final ticket items that need to get paid before we can release final funds. Just going through, making sure all details are buttoned up nice and neat. And keep your press that hopefully by next board meeting, all that'll be taken care of and we'll be closed out on that. As far as the press box, we did have a few holdups between weather. They did have some COVID issues with some crew members, so that set them back a little bit. But they're back on track now, they're making very, very good progress. They actually started the brick veneer today. The interior, they're just about ready to start sheet rock on. So they, they're making really good progress. By the end of next week, it's going to look like a completely different structure. It'll actually start to look like something.
Something.
Actually done. So it's going very, very well.
God, do you have a, a new ETA on when that, when the press box is expected to be complete?
Uh, right now, as of today, the superintendent was hoping to have it completed in about a week and a half is what he's looking at to try to get CO to completed.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else on Elevate or that's it, right? So next up is Safe Schools Committee. Mrs. Carr or Mrs. Stein, unsure which one is taking it and going?
I'll start, so. All right, before we get started, I just want to specifically point out that we have a lot of students listening to this report tonight and I am thrilled to hear that. I'm glad that they're taking an active role in, in providing some feedback with some of this stuff. And welcome to our students. So, all right, when we get started here, we're gonna, again, as always, the last couple of months, we keep our guiding principles as just kind of a nice reminder to our committee as we continue to meet throughout this process. So I won't go over those. So we can kind of skip through and then again, the next slide, one more slide. I do want to stop here and just point out that over the past couple of months, especially since we have been in Plan B, but essentially, you know, since the start of school, we have been looking at factors kind of internally to LNC that could influence our decision. And that was, that information was in the last column, kind of that last bullet. And that encompassed things like case rates internally, operational issues. You know, if we have any student issues or, or anything like that, it, it. You know, if we have any student issues or, or anything like that, it kind of was, was a, it was a lot of things kind of in one bullet. The committee decided this last go around, just as a housekeeping matter. The internal LNC data that Ms. Shipman reports on Wednesdays, we broke that out and moved it over to the health, health factors column. And that's simply because when we talk about the health data, you know, originally when our committee started, we looked at, well, what data do we really want to be looking at? And we knew that we didn't want to go statewide because that would encompass a lot of areas that weren't relevant to us. And at the time, because this was prior to us starting school, we decided to focus on county metrics. I mean, it's, you know, anytime that we can drill down, that's going to be better. Now that we've, you know, since school has started, we've been collecting that data and like I said, just for housekeeping purposes, we wanted to kind of keep it with all the other health data because we look at it in total. So I didn't want to ignore that in case somebody was looking at it and wondered why there was a slight change. But we did break that out from the last bullet in the third column and, and made it its own bullet. Okay, we can move on. So we're going to talk about kind of what's happened since the last time we met in the beginning of December. Again, it's important to remember that we look at the health data in total. If we focus on one thing or one factor, sometimes that can give us an incomplete or an inaccurate picture. And unless you are living under a rock, it has certainly been, been rough the last couple of weeks in terms of the county data. As far as the governor is concerned, he's had several press conferences in this past month. He did extend our Phase Three, our modified Phase Three through the end of January. He, and, and the county has continued to report that the metrics that we look at have been trending in an unfavorable direction. The last update for Mecklenburg County was for data through the 10th of January. Typically they report on Wednesdays and Sundays and those data dates are, are usually like, they're not actually released until usually two or three days after. So there was, there is a data update as of yesterday, but it probably won't be published until tomorrow. So the latest we had was the 10th. Going specifically into the metrics that are in our guidelines, we've had an increase in daily new COVID cases with a seven day average of 895 cases a day compared to 475, which was the data we had when we met early December. At the time in December when we met, I included the 14 day moving average because at that time, the seven day average was substantially different than the 14 day average, which can indicate a couple of things. One being that we were starting to see a, a significant trend in a, in a unfavorable direction. This 14 day moving average is a little closer to what has been our seven day average, indicating that it's been fairly consistent over a period of time. Our percent positive over the last seven days on average is 15.5% compared to 8.9 when we met in December. Next slide. Hospitalizations, there's been an average of 521 patients compared to 205 back when we met, which is an increase substantially in hospitalizations and, and COVID related sicknesses. Testing availability and turnaround time, it's relatively consistent since we last met. It has slipped slightly. And I think that is because we've been testing a lot lately and it just the lab's ability to turn those tests around. We've had our internal, and I'm going to ask Ms. Shipman in a minute to kind of chime into the internal LNC data. We, we have seen somewhat of a a dip in reporting over the remote period, but our cases internally have remained consistent. There haven't been any, continued to not have any documented cases of any transmission to or from students or teachers within the classroom. And we added in the appendix some defining terms and some additional information. And I wanted to, Ms. Shipman, I wanted to invite you to kind of speak on what's been going on at LNC since our last board meeting, if you wouldn't mind.
So primarily since our last board meeting, we have, a, a good bit of that time has been either remote or holiday break, for example, for Thanksgiving or for Christmas. So during that time, we have continued to encourage our parents to report any cases that they may have had, exposures they may have had, any cases that their students may have had. We do get parents who are continuing to report outside of the remote setting, which is fantastic. We're able to keep up with that. And to, to monitor those numbers. We also are still in communication periodically with the Health Department. We are not in the same kind of communication with the Health Department as we normally are because we are in remote. And so there's not that chance of exposure from student to teacher or from teacher to student because they're not there. Though obviously they're going to focus their time and energies on things that are more prevalent for schools and whatnot that they are, are tracking where they may still be in school. And that information, of course, would be much more valuable at that time. When we return, they will, they will pick back up with reporting that information to us verbally. I usually get a phone call over the, over this remote period. I get an email. We match that up together. If I have any questions, I'm, I'm certainly welcome to contact them. I usually have the information before they provide it to me because parents are pretty transparent with that and they've been really good about it. We want to continue to encourage them to be really good about that so that we can use our community numbers. You know, our community is a smaller community, 21, 20, count our staff, 2,361 populations, staff and students, as opposed to trying to use the Mecklenburg County metrics, which of course is a million, 100, and I don't remember how many thousand, but a lot. So we're trying to keep up with, with our own numbers so that we can continue to make our decisions once we have all of that information in place.
Great. And I, we have, I think, two more slides for the health data. So I do want to open availability for the board to ask Ms. Shipman questions. But if we could just hold that thought, again, because we kind of look at everything in total. And then once we get through these two slides, we'll pause. And then if we have any health related questions, we can deal with them at that time. So, um, what has gone on this past week? On Tuesday, the Director of Health and I am gonna, I had her title written down. Ms. Gibby Harris issued a directive for Mecklenburg County. And that was in response to the numbers within the county and among some other things. And essentially what that directive did is it asked for members of the community, if you don't have to be out or if you have an option to have school virtually or run your business virtually, work from home. They are asking you to utilize those options as much as possible. Part of that directive did talk about sports and, and there were quite a few other things in that, but that kind of related to our situation. In addition, there was another study that came out and this was, I think, the very beginning of January. It was from Duke University and UNC. They had a joint study where they looked at just about 100,000 students over a nine week period this past fall. And what they found was that schools are able to operate safely if they develop and adhere to specific COVID prevention policies. So they found that transmission rates between student to student, student to teacher and, you know, adult to adult was relatively low. I think they found 32 cases in total over that, over those 100,000. And again, they went on to define those prevention policies and those include face coverings, socially distancing, hand washing. They did find benefits from our, the daily health screenings, which we do for our elementary and middle school students. The parents do those prior to the kids returning to the classroom that morning. The high school students do that on their own. The transparency in reporting infections, again, we have seen that our community has been pretty diligent about notifying Ms. Shipman if there are issues, cases, exposures within their households. We do again, encourage and remind people that regardless if you're a distance learner, if you're on vacation, if you're, well, I guess if you're on vacation. But if there is a period of time where even if you are not physically in the building, we still ask that that information be provided so that we can keep track of it. And that there's an efficient contact tracing and collaboration with the Health Department. And as you just heard Ms. Shipman say, she is on speed dial with the Health Department. So, and then the final slide is just an update to our county map. This was a system that the governor put in place over the fall. And at our last board meeting, Mecklenburg County was in the yellow. We are, along with a majority of the counties in the state are in the red. It's not surprising given the data releases that have happened. And essentially that's because our case rate per 100,000 residents, our percent positivity are all above their color coded threshold. So it put them in the red. Our hospital systems are at a medium impact. So they rate it low, medium and high. I think there is a future slide. So if I say something and then we might cover it again. We did have contact with the hospital systems or we, we listened to a press conference where the hospital system said that they are basically, you know, I mean, it's hard. There's a lot of patients who are needing services in the hospital, but they are holding their own. There are no immediate plans for any type of field hospital in our area. I think some of the other counties are having to, to say a different story. But so far for our immediate area, Atrium and Novant have been able to, to take care of the, the needs that they've been able to take care of. So I believe that was the last slide for the health data. So I want to pause there and ask any questions or, or ask if there are any questions from any of the board members about that data.
Yeah, Amy, it's, it's Leslie. So a comment and then a, a question coming. So I do find the, the directive interesting and then it, you know, it talks about the slowing the exponential growth of COVID in the community and calls out schools specifically recommending virtual learning for those schools. But, you know, in the data that you just presented, both from an independent study perspective, our LNC specific data and even data from schools that are around us in the community who have been able to bring students back successfully, some of them for a period of five months. Now with, with safety protocols in place, I think it, it tells a little bit different story in terms of the risks of schools. So my question is, has there been any follow-up with Gibby Harris and the Public Health Department? I understand that there are other schools who have contacted that department to really understand. Was that directive intended for schools like LNC that have strong safety protocols in place and have proven that those have been effective during the time that we've had in-person instruction?
Yeah.
Amy, can I answer that?
Yes, ma'am.
So Leslie, today, as a matter of fact, I did see a, a press conference, for lack of a different term, where Gibby Harris, along with Dr. Megan Sullivan and another member of the Mecklenburg County Health Department, spoke with members of the press and some of the questions that they asked were just like the questions that you have. And specifically Gibby's response to them was that while the schools are mostly safe and are using, utilizing their safety protocols and are doing a good job at that, that being in school continues to bring about the transmission of community spread because of just being generally out and about and that they are feeling like that to school, from school, the things that are, that surround school are part of what they're talking about when they're talking about community spread and changing schools to remote. Not necessarily because the schools are not doing a good job, but because it also falls into play with doing all the things in the community that you do when you're transporting your kids or doing the things for your kids back and forth to school.
Yeah. And one of the things she specifically said, and I'm just going to piggyback, is that even with the best mitigation and prevention strategies, when the community spread is as significant as it is in Mecklenburg County, you run the risk of those protections not being as effective. And I think that, that is why she included the schools in the recommendation, even though during the last quarter, I mean, we did awesome in quarter two. And, you know, we have to commend every stakeholder, our parents, our teachers, our staff, everybody. They did what they needed to do and, and we kept our community safe. But as these numbers continue to rise, she indicated that, you know, she's concerned that even the best precautions, you know, may not be enough. And that's kind of where, one of the reasons where she felt it was necessary to make this directive.
Thank you. And one other question, then I'll open the floor to the others. So I know we have the benefit of having a number of medical professionals who, who students attend LNC. Can, can someone speak to, you know, I've seen a couple of emails, but I, I think we've heard from some of those parents who've had feedback on, you know, not just the health aspect of this, but alternatively the, the impacts of not having students in school and, and the social emotional aspect of this. So can you just speak to some of the feedback we've heard from medical professionals in the LNC community?
Shannon, do you want to take that or do you want me to take that?
I can take that. And what we're, what we're hearing is what we heard in the fall, which is we have leaned into some of the medical professionals. They've shared studies and depending on, there's still differing beliefs even amongst medical professionals. So that is, that is where, where we continue to stand. And, you know, we, we are very fortunate that we have folks in our community who have great experiences and training in this area. But I think it, it lends itself again to why these decisions are not easy. Because for, you know, as you talk to different folks, the, the different medical professionals and their decision-making on what they're doing with their own kids and what they're seeing themselves, it, it, it is widely variable. So we're, we're trying to look at all things, including the studies that we find, plus what we're hearing from them in making decisions. And then of course, the one that we're leaning into the most is the Mecklenburg Department of Health. And because I think they have the, the pulse on the closest relationship of how this is affecting our community.
Thank you. I actually spoke with a doctor yesterday, I actually spoke with a doctor yesterday who is a parent who I won't call out because I didn't anticipate speaking to this. And so I didn't ask for permission, but their entire family has COVID at this moment. And the first thing that physician said to me was, I am 100% certain that even though I see COVID patients, it did not come from me because of all the safety precautions that we have in place. But yet we still got it in the house because one of our or two of our children, again, trying not to call that physician out, has chosen to do extracurricular activities outside of their norm. And so when, when the community is, is doing that, when you're still doing things outside of the norm where you might not be as cautious, you still bring it into the house of the most cautious people. So to the point of, to the point that I'm trying to make is that while we are being as cautious as we can possibly be in school and doing the things that we're and doing the things that we're supposed to do in school, and school is considered the safest place for the kids, when there are outside activities that are still going on and things that life balance has to happen, you, you can be as safe as you want to at school. Things are still happening outside of school. And so as the numbers are high like they are, we have to think about that when we are making decisions for what, what is the best choice for Lake Norman Charter.
And so, Leslie?
Yes.
I just thought I'd jump in here too, because I know you had had a question about socio-emotional health. And being a part of this committee, we are looking at that as well. And we send out surveys to the students, and that's going to be coming up later in the presentation. So I just wanted to let you know that Amy's gonna be talking to a slide on that as well.
Thanks, Richley.
Okay.
Miss Shipman, one.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Yeah, one additional question. You, you referenced earlier that, you know, you're keeping an eye on the Lake Norman Charter community, and it's, you know, a lot smaller and a lot easier to manage than the larger Mecklenburg County community. And I also know we, we haven't had any clusters. I don't think we've had any clusters in school or transmissions in school. But are you seeing from reporting from parents, higher exposure, higher cases, given what we are seeing in the, in the larger community in the last few weeks?
In the last few weeks, I have seen some higher exposures, mostly with adults. I speak to those, so cases for adults, which transfers into cases or exposures for the, the student population. And that is, you know, I talk to them, I talk to the parents. Sometimes it's a guardian, not a parent, parent. If the student is old enough, I talk to the student, depending on age appropriate. And so we gather that information. And yes, there are some higher numbers in our Lake Norman community during this remote period. When I talk to them, it is, I was at my friend's house, I was at gymnastics. We had a gathering for Christmas, we had a gathering for New Year. We, so the things that, to the point, the things that we have and the numbers that we are seeing are more community than school, but they're still our community. They're still our kids and our parents. Even though they're not, even though we continue to have zero evidence, no evidence of virus transmission in the classroom setting, yes, we have our community who are out in the larger community who are having some higher numbers at this time. Which, again, is just part of our metrics for all of the decisions that the, that the Safe Schools Committee has to make, so.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that has a, a health-related question before we move on? No? Okay. Do you want to take this?
Ready to roll. So i- if the board remembers, at, at our last meeting, we were able to present data from both our parent community and our staff community. And as a follow-up, we wanted to make sure, I think there were some really good insightful questions about our students and how they're feeling. And so the committee crafted a survey that had similar questions to what we asked both our staff and our students, just to give some ideas of trends and feelings. Before I move on to the actual survey, when we were talking about constituents and doing their part, I want to specifically call out, because I know they're on this call, students. I have, I think most teachers and administrators would agree, we have been really very impressed with how students have taken the directives and the expectations at school seriously. They, they have, they have complied with what we have asked them to do, which has, has led to the, the success inside the school, along with the teachers' concerted efforts in doing so. So I, I just wanted to call them out specifically because I, I think it really, in this case, is going to take everybody, for all of us to continue to have success.
Shannon, can I chime in on that before you start?
Yes.
I also would like to piggyback on what you said. I'm in all three, I'm on all three campuses on a regular basis. I see the students, they're doing a fantastic job. They know what they need to do, they're doing it. Our teachers are helping them, they're doing it. Our teachers are working so hard to keep our students socially distanced, to make sure they're wearing a mask, to create this curriculum and this environment for these students in here. That I'm so proud of how our teachers and our students are doing. Teachers are a big part of communicating the information that I get. So if a, sends a teacher an email and says, oh, I'm not feeling well today, it could just end there. I'm not feeling well today, so I can't do my test. Teachers are forwarding that to me. If I see that student was absent on another day, or if I feel like that's a call that I need to make, I call those parents. I understand Johnny's not feeling well. I get that information from them. My, my brother has COVID, I, I can't come to school today. So all of the emails, everything, all the information that these teachers are getting, they are continually forwarding to me so that I can follow up on it. And I would say that that is a good forty to fifty percent of where I get my information. And I, and I call these parents. Sometimes students aren't telling the truth. Side note, you will eventually be found out if you're telling your teachers you have COVID and you don't. So I want to say that I'm super proud of the students, I'm super proud of the teachers, I'm super proud of our, our custodial group, they're doing a phenomenal job. Our facilities group is staying on top of that. We, we are doing an excellent job. We are working really hard, the teachers are working, the students are doing a great job. And I just want to thank them personally for all the help that they're giving me, because it's a lot. They, they are a huge contributor to how well we are able to do our job.
Thanks, Miss Shipman. So diving into the middle school student survey data, we had seven, seven hundred and fifteen students participate. Of that group, one percent of them were distance learners. And as compared to remote instructions, student lists, students listed seeing their teachers and their friends as the top benefit, seventy-eight percent. So they're, they're excited to see their teachers and their, their friends. The other meaningful benefit was that they felt like they better understood the content when they had the opportunity to have at least some in-person instruction. The top two concerns about hybrid learning was that it was hard to learn from home when they were not in school, and they had a tough time finding a routine. Just getting, and, and those are much lower percentages, but those were the two highest that were listed. Seventy-one percent of the middle school students felt like they were progressing in the hybrid learning model, and seven percent disagreed. And you guys are really smart, and you add that together, and it's not a hundred percent. And the others were, did, you know, it didn't answer, right? You know, what, not one way or the other. And then lastly, the students largely agreed that they have the resources they need to support hybrid learning. So that is the middle school data. The high school data varies a little bit. We had just about four hundred students participate. That was distributed a little bit differently to high school students because we wanted, they were given some time and encouragement, but they were not carved out. So that's why you see a little bit of higher number, but it's certainly a good sample size. Eight percent of those students were distance learners. As compared to remote instructions, students listed seeing their teachers and friends as the top benefit, a little bit less, but still the highest. And the other meaningful benefit was they also understood the curriculum better. So again, not quite as high, but, but the two top same things is just having that contact was important to them. The top concerns about hybrid learning was they had a tough time finding a routine. They felt grades were worse, and it was hard to learn from home. And not surprisingly, some high school students have different demands than middle school students, right? Some high school students don't have as much structure from their parents. You know, and, you know, as developmentally, that is appropriate, but that would explain why you're seeing some of these different, different trends at a little higher rate. Forty-seven percent of students feel that they were progressing in Plan B. Twenty-five percent disagreed, the others were no answer one way or the other. Fifty-eight percent of the students felt that they have some re, the resources that they need. And is, because of the data that we saw as far as progressing in the curriculum and some of the other, you know, numbers, we wanted to really understand. And there was an opportunity for comments. And the comments clearly indicated that school touchpoints were vital and useful for students. That, you know, that was just an opportunity for them to engage. And, you know, obviously, from a social, emotional standpoint, and seeing their friends and teachers, that was, that was a positive. So that, those are the two survey datas. Before we go any further, do you want, does anybody have any questions about the survey data before we progress further? Okay. All right. So some of our current and continued challenges is that, obviously, we're seeing increasing community spread. We continue to monitor staffing for our potential substitute pool. You know, at this point, there has not been confirmation that the new variant is here in North Carolina, but obviously, it's something on the committee's radar. There is clearly vaccination distribution delays in the state, as we've heard. I'm sure everybody's heard about that. Plus, they've now opened, they've changed the criteria a little bit. So that does mean essential workers are going to be a little bit further down the list. There isn't really a timeframe around that, it's just something that we're, we're monitoring. And student performance, as compared to past years, we're seeing a slight increase of, of students that are struggling at grades seven through twelve. We are not seeing any statistical difference in grades K through six. And the seven through twelve, again, I want to, it is, we are continuing to monitor that. Student performance is extremely important, and we're seeing a slight increase, which there is multiple facets of reasons why that could be for students. And, you know, from learning in a new way, from switching from one platform or one instructional model to another, to just, you know, having their things at home. I could go on. There's, there's lots of reasons for that. And one of the things that we're focusing in on now as a school staff is how do we have interventions and greater support for not only struggling students, but all of our students? How can we have the best possible touchpoints? Because as we continue to go through this instructional practice, we continue to learn what is working and a lot, you know, having staff share amongst themselves and reading best practices and reading about other schools. So we will continue to do that, and you, you will see us adjust accordingly. Amy, is there anything else that you wanted to add to this slide?
No, I think that, that was, that was, was good. Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, hey, Shannon, or Mrs. Stein, just real quick before you leave that slide. So with the folks that are going, or that, your comment there about struggling in grades seven through twelve, have we kind of dug into that to, to understand if there's anything that we were committing to do, like more frequent touchpoints, things of that nature? Like, do we need to deep dive that, I guess, a little bit?
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. We, so this data, we just pulled together earlier this week because that's when the data was available, is the end of the semester. And I will say, we were tracking this as a committee all the way along. And thank you to the principals who are, and teachers who are helping to report. We did a mid-quarter evaluation, and we did an end of the quarter, end of the semester evaluation. And the good news is, from the middle of the quarter, it was, it was something that we were a little bit concerned about at a greater level than what we saw at the end of the quarter. And so right then, at the middle of the quarter, there was building level discussion on, okay, we're, we're seeing this, what can we do? So some of those strategies are already paying off because the difference between what we saw mid-quarter to what we saw at the end of the quarter is better. But that is not the end of the, the deep dive. We will continue to do that. I met with the instructional technology facilitators on Monday to talk about instructional design, what they're continuing to see and hear through their connections, listservs, other schools that they're observing. And it is, it is something we will continue to do and work with our teachers. And I know at the individual grade level and classroom level, obviously, teachers want their students to be successful. So it's, it's being looked at from bear, from lots of different lenses. But it, it may mean we need to continue to change what we're doing to, to meet the needs of all students in this differing environment.
Thank you.
Amy, are you ready for the next slide?
I'm good. Are you gonna take this one, or am I?
Not it. The committee took this one, so we will, we will take this. So the committee's recommendation is going to be to comply with the current health guidance of the Mecklenburg Public Health Director and remain remote through February fifth. And that, I am talking specifically now just about the instructional method, not about sports. I, I think we need to address that separately. So this is, this is talking specifically about us helping to be good citizens, to do what we have been asked by the County Health Department, and to ensure that we are making sure that we're being as safe as we possibly can be. We, we chose February fifth. People are going to say, but it says February second, you have to go through February second. Well, February third is a Wednesday seminar, and then we have a board meeting on the fourth. So it made sense to us as a committee just to add on those two extra days so that we would have another board meeting then to reexamine. So in other words, at this point, we would hope to go back to hybrid instruction, starting on February eighth. But obviously, the committee is going to need to continue to look at what that data is. And they're going to have to, you know, confirm that, that that's what we're hoping to do is to come back into hybrid instruction on February eighth. But, but there's going to be, obviously, a lot happens in three weeks. Actually, a lot happens in twenty-four hours, we figured out.
Yeah.
You know, you just have to be real about that. But, but I want our families to know that this is a hardship. When we talk about us as stakeholders, that any decision that is being made affects all stakeholders. Some kids do great in remote learning, some kids struggle, some families have more support than others. So this does not come lightly, and it, you know, it was with careful deliberation and listening to the recommendation from the County Health Department, recognizing they are the medical professionals, but also looking at a critical eye, recognizing that we have data in our own community that we're going to continue to track and protocols that we feel are pretty strong. So I bring that up because I want us to be clear that while we recommend at this point to follow the Mecklenburg Public Health Director's recommendation, if this was to be extended, I don't want people to assume that we would make that same recommendation. We need to be thoughtful about looking at all of our guidelines. And that is, that is why we're leaning to do it in this case. But we will continue to look at this through a critical eye. So again, this is our recommendation for instruction-only sports. We will talk a little bit more about, if, once the board has a chance to ask questions about this.
Hey, Mrs. Stein, with the recommendation to extend virtual learning for a few more weeks, have there been any discussions by the committee about the virtual learning approach and whether or not there are any changes to that being discussed? So I know students are operating in an abbreviated schedule, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and the seminar days are on Wednesday. Can you, can you just speak to?
Yeah.
Do you believe that's the optimal approach, or are there changes that are being evaluated?
So I'll take that in two, two pieces. No, the committee hasn't talked about that because that's really an operational issue. And since that the committee's role really is in operations, they, we haven't dove into that. With that being said, I'm going to echo what I had said to Mr. Buckler. I think we have looked at, we, we are continuing to deep dive and to look at the data that's in front of us to try to determine what is the best possible way, recognizing the limitations that our teachers have, realizing the struggles that some of our families and students are having, as how to best support, again, not only our struggling students, but hopefully, providing an optimal experience for all of our students. So that has been a discussion, but it is something that we, obviously, when you're only going to be remote for two weeks, we didn't have, you know, we were talking about how we're doing instruction, both hybrid and remote. Now that we're going to be in remote for three more weeks, that's going to give us more space to talk specifically about that instructional delivery method. So you will, you will see us do that. And the principals and I have a meeting coming up early next week to, to take a deeper dive, including looking at data to do that.
So Mrs. Stein and Mrs. Carr, just really kind of two comments. One is really on that second bullet point, you know, just about being flexible. And if I think back to a couple of slides ago, I think. And if I think back to a couple of slides ago, I think Mrs. Carr, you covered that the modified Phase 3 is set to end on the 29th, I believe.
Yes.
And Governor Cooper's generally been, call it a week-ish out of, you know, an announcement. So that really puts a week or so until we have new news that we may have to react to. And, you know, that chart that you showed earlier was really telling in my mind. I just did sort of the quick math because it's far easier to count the yellow and orange counties than it was to count the red. So 84 red counties out there, if I got my math correct, I believe North Carolina has 100 counties. Eighty-four in the red, and only four, I believe, or five maybe, were in the yellow. So that's sort of, those numbers lead me to believe that I think Cooper is gonna come out with potentially some different direction on how we could approach this. I think the thing that I personally struggle with through this is I think there's been, as you guys have highlighted, a number of studies that say that we can operate in a hybrid mode safely. So I think, you know, I support the recommendation. I do feel like we need to do our part. You know, as part of this community event that is happening now. But I agree with you, Mrs. Stein, that, you know, if something were to, you know, another directive were to come out, we would need to take another look at that and figure out if we can operate safely, you know, how that plays with the directive and what the guidance is. So hopefully, you know, between adults doing their part and helping to bend the curve back the right way and/or, you know, Governor Cooper taking some action and/or the healthcare directive. Hopefully, all of those start to make a difference and we come back in line with where we need to be at the early part of February.
Yeah. And I mean, this committee, I mean, I, I think it's probably been said more often than not. I mean, our goal is to get these kids back. Like, that's our primary focus. But we have to be, you know, we have to be safe. We have to be considerate. You know, there's a lot of things that we have to weigh to make sure that that happens. But as soon as we feel like, you know, we can do that, given all of these. I mean, we look at, you know, our guidelines are 15 or 20 different things that we look at. You know, as soon as we can, when we can get comfort with all of that, barring any directives or mandates, I guess I'll say, from, you know, whether it's Cooper, whether it's at the local level, I mean, that, that's our focus is, is to get them back. So, you know, but we're only one piece of that little pie. And we need, you know, this is the opportunity where we need our community to kind of meet us, meet us there. And, and, you know, if we can do this as a community, then we can, we can get these kids back. So I don't know, Rick, I don't know if anybody else has any other questions. I know we're, we're gonna take two separate votes tonight, so I don't know if we're ready for a motion on this or if we have any other, any other questions. You're on mute.
Yeah, like, like I was saying, sorry about that. We'll see if there's any other questions, and if not, then we can open it up to a vote on the academic side.
Hey, hey, Amy, this is Jared. Unfortunately, I lost connection during a big portion of this. So I apologize if. Yeah, if you don't mind, just for my sake. No, I was just curious about that, the, when, with the statement about being a directive. I was trying to get clarity on what, what that meant. Is that guidance? Is that mandatory? I mean, it doesn't sound like it's mandatory based on what I'm hearing. But can you, if, if it hasn't already been asked or explained, can you, can you just expound on that a bit?
Yeah, of course. It is a directive, which is basically just a, for lack of better words, pretty please. You know, it's not a mandate. It's not required. She's asking us as citizens of the community, you know, to do our part. So it, you know, there are going to be people that choose not to follow it. There are going to be people that choose to follow it. But until, you know, we have yet throughout this whole process, I mean, it was like pulling teeth just to even get somebody to put a percentage out there that was reasonable. You know, that took months and months and months before we were even there. So, you know, this is the first time at any level, state or local, that, you know, a public health official has come out and made a stance, and it, it gives us a little bit of a pause. You know, that it's, it's not a decision that I think she came to lightly. I mean, she shared that in her Q and A. But she did stop short of, of making it mandatory.
Yep. Thank you for the clarity.
You're welcome.
I know it's been said before, but it's worth saying again. I continue to be impressed by this, the committee's thoroughness and ability to be comprehensive about our review, be objective. I don't sense anyone coming in with their own personal agenda before looking at, at all. And then we look at all of, all of the data, all aspects of it. We're immersed in this. We're attending every press conference, you know, every live feed that we can from state and local officials and sharing that and, and, you know, very heavy communication and, and so objective about it. And I know people are all over the place on how they will feel about this decision. So I felt like it was worth saying.
Yeah. I will tell you, since that directive has come out, I, I mean, I don't think my phone, I've probably, you know, I don't think, I mean, there isn't probably a moment throughout the day where we aren't communicating with each other because this is, you know, this was, this was hard. This was hard. And, you know, it, it took a lot, you know, we, we met Monday night. We came to a decision. This directive came out Tuesday. We met again Wednesday morning. You know, we spent, we spent a, a big, you know, a lot of time on this.
Okay. So with that, let's see if there's any motions out there.
Yeah, Elizabeth, I'll do that we adopt the recommendation to stay remote an extra couple of weeks through February 5th.
This is Greg. I'll second.
Greg, we keep doing that. Your turn.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion or questions? Just in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So if I did my listening slash math correct there, I believe there were two opposed, correct? I just wanna verify that.
Yes, that's what it sounded like.
Yes.
Okay.
For the record, because the secretary has to talk and say who is opposed and not. Can the two people who were opposed identify themselves, please, so that Ms. Skyer can get that in the record? And then she'll have the others for positives.
Leslie Fogarty.
And Jared Tidley.
Thank you.
Okay. So motion carries on the academic side for remote instruction through February 5th. Mrs. Stein, I'll turn it back over to you to speak on the athletics side.
Um, thank you. Yeah, obviously, as, as we are aware and through our public comments and student participation this evening, participation in sports is another thing that the directive had some guidance on and, and yet is not an easy decision and like anything should be looked at in totality. So I'm gonna ask that Mr. Schlegel, our athletic director, I'm gonna share a screen. He has a graph and he's gonna talk a little bit about the impact of suspension of sports would be and what that could look like, and then we can talk about a recommendation. So, Mr. Schlegel, I'm gonna turn it over to you and I will pull up your slide.
Good evening. Hope everyone's doing well. So I just want, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, so I just wanted to talk briefly about athletics and where we are. So I'm gonna, gonna do a brief overview of where we are, what we've been doing, what sports are in season, and then also what nearby schools in Mecklenburg County, what they are planning on doing. So currently, we have cross-country swim, men's and women's basketball, cheerleading, men's soccer, men's and women's lacrosse in season. There's 188 student athletes currently participating in sports. My coaches and my athletes have been doing an amazing job since we started in November of following the directive from the NCHA and making sure that we have gotten our daily monitor sheets, that we are masked at all times, that we are cleaning our supplies and taking the proper steps to make sure that these kids can continue on with athletics. Um, we've actually, and it was mentioned earlier tonight, we have actually had volleyball go through a full season, get all 14 games in. I am happy to say that we were one of only a few in our conference that were able to do that. And that has a lot to do with our coaches, as well as our athletes and parents making sure we're doing the right thing. Also, I want to send out kudos to Ms. Rebecca, Ms. Shipman, who's been hands-on. She's our COVID lady. My trainer and myself don't deal anything with COVID. She's the one that steps in and deals with COVID. Every step of the way, my coaches have been taught, as soon as they hear about the word COVID or anything about symptoms, she jumps on it and, and makes sure that we are doing the proper steps and evaluating from there. We have a lot of athletes that are looking to go to the next level. A lot of athletes at this point that are starting up seasons that got their season taken away last spring. And, and I feel it's important that we get them back out on the field at all possible. I feel like we're doing the right steps. But let me tell you a little bit about each season and where we're at. Cross-country currently has regionals tomorrow. We have the men's and women's team, 14 runners that have qualified. They will be running tomorrow, and then those who advance and get the times will run one more time next Friday. Swim and dive has currently had three meets. They have two more scheduled before regional. And like our, our, our parents said earlier, those two meets are important to get those qualifying times to hopefully participate in the regional round. A lot of our students already have qualified, but we're hoping those that are right there on the verge can get in the pool and get those two done. Basketball up to this point has only had two games. In fact, we had to cancel last Friday's home opener due to the weather. And then we were supposed to play Wednesday, and unfortunately, the visiting team had, had an issue, so we had to move it out a few weeks. If we were to hold off with a mandate and not start back up until February 2nd, we would miss seven games, seven games out of a 14-game schedule. That would mean we would return and only have three weeks left to try to make up those games with the mandate, with the state, with how many games we can play per week. Also, with the conference and other COVID issues that may come up, I don't feel confident we would be able to put a 14-game schedule together, which could impact our possibility of going to the playoffs. Men's soccer, women's lacrosse, and men's lacrosse all started Monday. They had three full days of practice. Men's and women's lacrosse got cut short last year. Men's soccer has a new coach with a lot of new kids out, hoping to develop the program. If we were to take a step back and not get back on the field until February 2nd, they would miss their first part of their games, first part of the season, as well as that is a prime time. We have a shortened season as it is. To have these students come together, build that chemistry as a team and be able to get some practices in before they step on the field, I feel is important, as well as my coaches. Let me talk a little bit about where we're at with schools we're involved with, as well as schools around us. So we are part of the South Fork Conference, which is made up of Lincoln County and Catawba County schools. I was in a three- to four-hour meeting with them today. They are all moving forward as normal. They're not part of Met County, so I wouldn't expect them to do anything different. CMS, I'm sure you all have been hearing about them. They are allowing volleyball and cross-country. Their teams are in playoffs currently to finish up their seasons and putting everything else on hold until February 15th. Community School of Davidson, right down the street from us, will be continuing with sports, but they're stopping all unnecessary workouts with teams that are not in season, as well as they're looking at not having spectators come to events until they feel it's appropriate. Queens Grant, another charter school in, in more the central part of Charlotte, has suspended sports until February 2nd. Bradford Prep, another charter school that is in, in, in Charlotte, Mecklenburg County. Their board is meeting tonight, but from a few 80s I've talked into, they're in their conference. They believe they will suspend until February 2nd as well. Country Day, Latin and Providence Day have all suspended their sports until the 26th of January. Canon, Charlotte Christian, Holy Trinity, and Covenant Day are all moving forward with their sports as planned. So as I'm talking to you guys, I, I just wanted to let you know, and I know you've all received a lot of emails, as have we. It, it's important to our families. It's important to our students, any way we can to get them out on the field, to continue on. It's, it's normal for them. That's the one time for two hours a day, they get to go out on that field and be normal, as normal as they can be in, in this culture, so.
Hey, Mr. Schlegel, a quick question. You touched on this a few minutes ago, I think, about Mrs. Shipman and just sort of the coordination. Can, just wanted to confirm that, you know, if there is an exposure, as an example, in athletics, that that is counted in the broader LNC numbers?
Absolutely. If you look at, if you, for example, when our basketball team had, actually was a potential exposure, but we did, as we always do, and acted responsibly and aired on the side of caution, without looking at all of the, the footage from the gym, there was no way to really know about exposure. So we aired on the side of caution, acted responsibly, and we did put all 25 of our basketball team numbers in our exposures for our dashboard on that particular week. And we would continue to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Schlegel, two questions. One, with respect to the coaches, I assume all of your coaches are comfortable with moving forward. Have they been given the option, if they're not comfortable to express that? You know, sports are voluntary, and so, at least personally, I lean towards giving students and staff the right to participate in something that they want to do. But I just want to make sure from a staffing standpoint, that's the case. And then two, you, you made a comment about CSD and kind of what their, their policy is, which sounds like no fans in the stands or workouts for, I guess, sports in offseason. Is that your recommendation as well, or you think that's too strict of a policy?
Um, I, I do feel that the offseason workouts, I, I think right now what's important is the teams that are in season. And I, I do feel that the numbers are high, so I do feel that right now it's important that those teams that are in season currently, they continue on because if, if we do hold off a little bit, they are gonna lose that opportunity to possibly advance in playoffs or not be able to continue on with the playoffs. As, as far as the no spectators, we've been doing a great job. We've got a lot of feed. We've been doing some live streaming for those that haven't seen it for the indoor sports. Outdoor, we would have to look at some other options when that starts up. But, you know, that's something that, that I think i- if, if we're looking to get the athletes out on the field, I think that's our first priority. So i- if, if there's that, that, that gray area and, and we're like, how do we get them on the field? And if we unfortunately have to remove parents from the stands to allow that to happen, then yes, I would be in favor for that. I want to make sure our students can get out on the field first and foremost. And as far as staffing, um, yes, I've had individual conversations like I always do with my staffs. My staff is, we're very personable, a lot of text messages, a lot of calling. I've had a couple that have opted out. I've had a couple that are, I actually have a basketball coach who is doing a lot of film. He's not coming to practice. He's not coming to games, but he's watching the game film and helping out Coach K with reporting or with scouting and, and, and monitoring the game. I do have some coaches that, you know, may opt with the way things are right now to take a step back. And it will be up to me to try to figure out how we're gonna fill that spot to continue on.
I have a similar question. You know, I want to make sure that we're not showing any kind of favoritism toward our athletes and, and. and, and, you know, making exceptions for them that we're not making for students that are not participating in sports. However, I do understand and, um, can get behind making somewhat of an exception when we've got an optional situation like this, when we're talking about optional extracurriculars. So for me, I guess the question is, is there going to be some kind of assurance that any team members who are not comfortable participating during the period of time where the school is, is maintaining full remote? Will they not lose their positions on the team if they opt out?
No, no, we've actually had a few students that have opted out of the season completely, um, whether they are living with a family member that may be of high risk, and, um, and my, and our coaches know that, you know, we have younger kids that, um, that want to be on the team that can't be, that will not impact them in the future. And as far as if a student opts out for a week or two, um, you know, our, our coaches, if they, if they're making the team, would welcome them back. I guess the only big thing is, is these seasons are so short that there's got to be a time to get them in to get a tryout for a team that makes a cut, because it's, it's hard to save positions if you don't know someone's coming out.
But Matt, that really wouldn't affect if we saying that, and, and Elizabeth, correct me if I'm wrong, we're talking about the, um, the sports that are currently in season.
Oh.
Those teams are already, have already been made.
Already made, yep.
So if we're going to suspend everything that is not already in season, um, I think the question, and just to clarify, is if a student opted because their family was taking the directive seriously and wanted to have them sit out for a bit, um, do they lose their spot on the team? So say a basketball kiddo that's parents chose to, to not have them participate, because it's a voluntary activity, can they still come back to it?
Absolutely. Sorry, I, I misunderstood the question. Yes, absolutely. If the teams are made, um, if they step away and they talk to their coach, they can absolutely come back and jump right back into play once they get back in.
Just like if they have an excuse, they get to be out for whatever that duration of time is, and then come back in. They're not penalized for that.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that, that if we're drawing a distinction here, that it's based on the optional nature, the voluntary nature of the activity. So I thank you for clarifying that.
It sounded like, um, this is Stephanie, sorry, was that Rick? Um, it sounded like some of the schools, I know you went through those quickly, Matt, um, some of the schools had a bit of variation, so like basketball was on pause and maybe the sports that were not as contact sports, um, like, um, I don't know, cross-country or swim, that they might finish out, but then basketball might be on pause. Have you considered any type of prioritization, not prioritization in, in, in importance, but more around contact? Is there a way to think about it that way and minimize the risk?
Yeah, I mean, of, of course there is. I mean, when you, uh, when you start looking at the sports that are going right now, you, you do have a, a variation. You do have a, a cross-country, which is a, um, a sport that's outside. It's an individual sport, there's no contact. Um, you look at like a swimming, yes, it's indoors, but it, they're in their separate lanes. There's a lot of guidelines in place in a pool. Um, you know, you do have, you know, men's, women's, across and soccer, which are outdoors. You're, you're going to have more of the space. You're not going to be, you know, inside. And then you have basketball, which is, has been going really well. Um, you know, there, there's very limited. Our coaches are doing a great job of not having exposure at practice unless necessary. So I, I feel like, could we, could we divide? We, we probably could sit down and take a look at that as a group, um. But i- i- it's hard for me with these students, um, in my position to, to, to try to do that. Um, and I, and I'll be honest, because I, you know, I, I have, you know, um, they're, they're all my kids, they're all my teams, my coaches, and it, it would be hard to kind of make that, well, you can go and you can't go, because this is important and that, you know what I mean? But I, I completely understand where we are as far as some are indoors, some are outdoors, some are contacting, some aren't, so.
Yeah.
The not direct answer, but it's, uh, it's a roundabout way.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I think, Matt, if I'm hearing you correctly, what you're saying is that your recommendation would still stand that the things that are in season you would like to see to be able to continue on. Um, but there, there are differences between all of the sports. There definitely is. The one positive about basketball, if I'm correct, when did basketball start, Matt?
Basketball started, uh, early December, and we started games the first week back in January. So we actually played one game last week. We had Friday canceled because of weather, and then we played one game, um, earlier in the week, and we're supposed to play our third or first opening game tomorrow night against Newton, Delaware.
And, and in that time period, I, I think you felt like the protocols have been strong and, and no transmission, and so that may lead to why you're making the recommendation.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, uh, Coach Schlegel, this is Rick. Just a quick question. Um, I believe you mentioned earlier that, uh, men's soccer and men's and women's lacrosse just started on Monday?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. When do their, when do their games actually start?
The week of the 25th.
Okay, of January?
Yes, sir.
Is that for all three, Mr. Schlegel?
Yep.
And, and as Matt alluded to, one of the challenges that we're continuing to have with sports is that they condensed a whole year's worth of sports activities into a much smaller timeframe, um, which caused of overlapping of sports, uh, facilities. And so when, when seasons, normally something that doesn't sound as long, like three weeks, doesn't sound like a long time. It's, it's much larger impact this year because of the condensed sports.
And, uh, probably one other question for me, and, and, um, Mr. Schlegel, you may or may not know the answer to this or have a perspective on it, but, you know, for a number of, uh, these sports, there are, you know, club teams and things of that nature that are, would be outside of LNC. Uh, do you have any perspective on whether those are continuing on?
I don't. I actually was looking at social media earlier, um, with CMS closing down their facilities. I know a lot of them count on those facilities. I know they're going to be looking around. I, I don't have a site. I do know that Huntersville Park and Rec has shut down.
Matt, Matt, isn't, uh, just to clarify, Mr. Buckler, were you asking about the facilities? Or are you asking about club sports and some of these more private places? I, I think they're talking-
They're called sports.
Club sports, club swimming, club lacrosse, club, that kind of thing.
I, I don't have a gauge on that. I think it's been too soon. Everything that's been going on, Rick, I haven't gotten a pulse on the club world.
Okay. So I, I guess probably the magic question is, what is the recommendation? In terms of, uh, from the administration on how we would move this forward?
So I'll, I'll try to help summarize. Um, and, and again, I just want to reiterate that this is not an easy decision. Um, we are trying to take all facets of understanding, and I struggled with this one, quite honestly, because, um, we, we definitely want to be responsive to what the community needs are, but we also have to balance what our families' needs are, our student athletes. Um, and, you know, one of the difference, there's a couple of differences with sports. And, um, as, as Elizabeth alluded to, um, it is optional. It is an activity, um, that for some of our students is life-altering if they're not able to participate. Um, as an example, if regional cross-country does not go tomorrow, there, there are students that are looking for college, um, acceptance, options, scholarships, and that's true of all of the sports. And, um, so I, I recognize that, um, that this could seem like it is contradictory to, to some of our other, other recommendations, but in weighing the impact, that's the best we can do. There are no clear answers. We're always going to weigh the impact. And this, um, by canceling sports all outright, the impact is, um, is significant. And so the recommendation, I believe what Mr. Schlegel would make, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, is to ask the board to consider those sports that are currently in season to be allowed to continue, obviously under close protocol and, and, you know, continued safety measures. Um, and then off-season, um, limiting, my recommendation is we would limit fans, um, at least in that three-week period, um, where we, you know, we can't. And, and I want to, I don't want to be crazy about that, when it's an outside cross-country meet, that they're going to take care of that. But as far as our own facilities, I'm not talking about external places. Um, and that we would, um, suspend offseason workouts at this point. So, Mr. Schlegel, was there anything?
Great job.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that, Ms. Stein, that offseason, uh, suspension or offseason sports suspension would just be for the period?
Correct. Yes, and actually, um, right, it would be, and I would ask in that case that we would let, start back up on February 3rd, because the directive, unless something changes with the directive. And if so, then we will, we will air on the side of caution, but, um, that would be through, the directive goes currently through February 2nd.
What sports would be started before, um, or what sports are we pushing out? Out of curiosity, under that, uh, recommendation?
When you say pushing out, Mr. Buckler, are you talking about the offseason workouts? Or are you talking which ones will continue to operate?
Uh, no, so I've got the, uh, the seven that would continue to operate. Um, if I understood that correctly, it would be the in-season ones, um, go. But, uh, you know, anything that's out of season would either not start or sort of the offseason workouts would cease. Um, so one, I want to make sure I understood that correctly, and if I did, the sports that are out of season are any of them slated to start over the next three weeks?
Matt?
Um, just, just so I'm clear, are you, are you speaking of like, so football officially starts on February 8th? We would not do any football workouts. We would suspend everything we're doing with the football program until the 3rd at the earliest, um, with the mandate. Um, now, Rick, are you talking about men's and women's lacrosse and soccer? It is officially in-season. Games don't start till the 25th. Would they be able to continue on with practice the rest of, tomorrow, next week, with preparation of their first games on the 25th and 26th?
And that makes sense, and I, I think it is football the next sport up, so to speak?
Is the next sport on February 8th, followed up with golf, tennis, women's soccer, and softball on March 1st?
So we have some time.
Okay. Yep.
And some of them-
So the three-week delay isn't-
I was just going to say, some of them have offseason workouts that we would suspend.
Yep.
Okay, and I think that's really what I was getting at, is that we're not impacting other sports other than the offseason workouts, and I'm not trying to trivialize that, but we're not stopping football from starting or stopping, um, track and field from starting or, or anything along those lines.
That's correct.
Rick, I think just from the, the sport standpoint, anything that's out of season would be considered in a dead period, given the recommendation that Mr. Schlegel is making. That's the athletic terminology, they'd be referred to as a dead period.
Okay. All right, um, so I think, uh, any other questions from the board? Okay, um, so I'll say one thing, and then we can, uh, kind of go into the vote. So on this one, I've, I've spent a fair amount of time thinking about it, looking at the NCHS, HSAA, I think it is, um, website, just trying to, to get myself grounded on it. And, and the conclusion that I kind of came back to was, in this case, there really aren't any good alternatives, um, as opposed to the academic side, where you can defer hybrid and still have a good, um, at-home virtual learning experience. Um, so, uh, for that reason, I, I'm inclined to go with the, the recommendation. Um, so, um, just wanted to kind of lob that out as, as perspective, um, to, uh, the rest of the board as, uh, we move forward to make, uh, a decision here, so. With that, I will, uh, open it up to kind of any further comments, and then we can kind of jump into the vote. All right, silence, so let's go. Is there a motion?
Um, this is Amy. I'll, I'll move to, um, I'll motion to, uh, adopt the, um, admin team's recommendation to continue to allow voluntary participation in sports, um, for those that are currently in season and, um, suspending, um, workouts for those that have yet started. Did I summarize that? Okay.
Great job.
This is Ridgely, I'll second.
Um, any further discussion questions? All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 All those opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Next up on-
Yep, I'll pull it up on the agenda. I'm pulling up the agenda for you, Mr. Buckler. There you go.
All right, so next up, I believe we're into new business and, uh, middle school staffing recommendations.
And I'm happy to get it over to Dr. Graham.
Hey, um, everyone, good evening. For the sake of time, I did have a longer, uh, speech prepared, but we're not going to do that this evening. I, I have two staffing recommendations, uh, for you this evening. One is, uh, for those of you who have been with LNC for a while, Ms. Justice was the, who was a pillar in our, uh, for our teaching community and staff, had, um, she decided to retire. Um, and her initial plan was to, to retire at the end of the school year, but circumstances caused her to have to make that decision a little sooner than she had expected. So, um, with that, we are going to be recommending Mrs. Laura Cook to assume the role of eighth grade, um, ELA, and she is credentialed. She is, has, uh, she's a veteran, has over 30 years of experience in teaching, and she is excited to come and to, to continue to, uh, assume the same instructional model that we have for eighth grade, um, where we will have that focus of, uh, grammar and writing that she would, um, be a part, that she would, um, teach, and then to work alongside Ms. Locke, uh, to do the reading. Um, and so we're excited to bring her aboard. Uh, so that is my first recommendation, Mrs. Laura Cook. Um, and then secondly, we, uh, would like to recommend Ms. Jennifer Hayes. Um, she is coming to assume our guidance counselor position. Um, she is coming from Huntersville Elementary School, and she is also an LNC mom. She, uh, has three students at the middle school currently, one seventh grader, and she is a fellow twin mom. So she has fifth graders, um, that are there at the school. She has decided about coming, energetic, innovative, and I believe that they both would be great additions to the middle school faculty.
All right, thank you, Dr. Graham.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion to, uh, approve the staffing recommendations?
This is Jen. I move to approve the staffing recommendations for Ms. Laura Cook and Ms. Jennifer Hayes.
This is Jared, I'll second that.
All right, all those, uh, in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. All those opposed? All right, motion carries. Welcome to LNC.
Thank you, and to know that they're coming in the middle of a pandemic, yes, bless them, and thank you all for your, uh, recommendation and approval.
And if they sat through a marathon board session, uh, bless them, goodness. All right. Uh, next up, uh, on new business is the 21-22 school calendar. Um, Mrs. Stein, I assume you're taking that one?
I am. Um, please find detached, hopefully, can you guys all see the calendar, the proposed calendar? So, um, we took a little bit of a different approach, and while the pandemic has not really been fun for anybody, I do think there are going to be some things that we are going to take away um, that have caused us to stretch and to think about how do we do things in different ways, and the calendar was no different this year. Um, so we, um, reached out to, you know, I, over the years, I've gotten feedback from our parents as to some of their preferences, and this year, we surveyed our staff to say, hey, what are your top preferences? And then we designed a calendar around that, um, made sure it met the state requirements. And then took it after we um got done with the draft, took it back to the team leaders, which is our team leads and our department chairs. They took one last look, and thank goodness, they found a couple of things, you know, it takes a village. And um this is our proposed calendar for for next year. It um closely mirrors in a lot of ways, as far as the number of P D days, when parent-teacher conferences are. The length of um our breaks and historically when they have been. And um and yet, taking into consideration the um the feedback we've gotten from stakeholders. So um I would be happy to answer questions about the calendar or the proposed calendar. I know we have some families that are excited about this, because I know they're thinking about the future and wanting to to make some plans. So I I hope that comes to fruition and. Are there any questions?
All right. Uh with no questions, we'll go ahead and move to motion.
This is Amy. I'll move to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school calendar.
Second.
So it'd be Leslie, Stephanie, dynamic duo, uh second, thank you.
Stephanie, go ahead.
Um uh let's see, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
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 All those opposed? All right, so uh next up, we need a motion to. Move to closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes one forty-three dash three eighteen. Dot eleven A six.
Hey, hey, Rick, just one clarification on that. Are we going back into A one?
Oh, great question, yes.
And A six?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. That the notes, the agenda reflects the right, the right closed session statutes.
Yeah, this is and I'll motion that we move to closed session. Um pursuant to General Statutes one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A one. One and A six, is that the right motion?
It's Elizabeth, I'll second.
All right, uh all those in favor?
Hi.
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 All those opposed? All right, motion carries. We are in closed session.